I'm calling the order and canceling the treatments. We'll be leaving this to the flag and the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dear my father, thank you for this beautiful day and this has been a look over council as we make decisions for our city. Look over our city staff and our residents in our town of Goddard. And thank you for your daily blessings and Jesus' help.
Okay, moving on, I want to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda in about a second. Keep in seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, civil, civic, can't talk. I've got a little bit of a cold, but I didn't think it'd affect my tongue this long. We'll go ahead and start some comments, three minutes. Please sign in, kind of like what's my line? And we'll be happy to hear anyone that wants to speak this evening, so.
Hello, my name is Brandon Glenda. I'm the vice president of served by C T past and here to speak on mosquito fogging in the city. I have a very unique background to talk on this topic. I spent 12 years as the director of occupational safety and health for Fortune 100 company in the state. Then I went on to run the state's largest privately owned pest control company before started my own, which is headquartered across the street. I've always had some concerns about the process Goddard is using. But those concerns were based on my assumption that you were using the industry standard practice items. And as a lot of people in our community have reached out to me and asked me detailed questions, I was appalled to learn that you're not doing that. The city is using organophosphate chemicals, which the pest control industry walked away from in residential environments in the late 19 teens. Almost 30 years ago, we said this class of chemical is too dangerous to use in residential areas. Because of its known carcinogens and its ability to continue to build up in people. This isn't a chemical that once you're exposed to, it slowly goes away. It has longevity. It's horrific. There is no reason that any modern city should be using this product for this purpose. There are so many better alternatives. I am more than willing to be a free would resource to the city. I would charge the city a thing, pick my brain, you know, reach out to me. I can help you design a mosquito program that's not going to hurt us all. Some of the considerations, resident notification, you know, there literally can be no one outside when this is happening. There can't even be pets. Since 2010, Central County building codes have required all new homes to be built with a 10% fresh air gain. You literally would have to tell people to turn off their air conditioner to do this correctly. To put it bluntly, it's asinine what we're doing, and I would strongly advise you to stop. In closing, I would give you some free recommendations. One, you need to have the employee who's been applying this product tested for a sti- cholesterol cholesterol inhibitors. This is a process that was used in the eighties when this industry used this chemical. We need to make sure his blood levels are okay. He probably needs to research some anti-cancer methodology and eat only organic food for the next five years. Secondly, there are some citizens that are talking about some pretty scary stuff. You need to understand this process. Again, I won't go into all that here, but when I told the supply house what the city was using, because I was trying to find out if they were signing it to you. She said words I can't repeat up here. And she said, the only other place I know of in four states that's doing that is an idiot small town in the corner of Oklahoma, and they're going to get sued. Lastly, there's just so many better ways. So I don't know that I can add more to that, but this is not what we should be doing. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Brandon. Anyone else? The mic is open. Going, going, going. We'll move on from citizen comments, eh? This time I'd like to give the council a chance to declare any conflict of communication they've had that might influence our ability to consider today's agenda items impartially. Aubrey, you're in. Okay, thank you for that. Pointings and proclamations. Mayor proclamations. In the way I've started out reading tonight, this could be a relative adventure. Honoring the Goddard Mitten Tree and recognizing its contribution to our community. Where does the Goddard Mitten Tree program begin over 30 years ago with a mission to ensure that families in the greater Goddard community would not celebrate the holidays without gifts or food? Whereas this meaningful tradition is growing into a cherished community-wide effort led by the Lions Club, supported by local churches and Goddard Public Schools and countless other partners and volunteers in the community? Whereas the Goddard Mitten Tree provides Christmas gifts for children with an empathy for the age of 15, ensuring joy, generosity are shared with families within the Goddard School District? And whereas the Mitten Tree Program distributes Thanksgiving and Christmas meals, allowing the generosity of our community through food drives and organized by the Goddard Lions Club, providing additional food resources for families in need throughout through the partnerships with the Goddard Church Food pantry? And whereas a single weekend during 2024, the Thanksgiving food distribution and the Goddard Mitten Tree Program served approximately 200 families, totaling nearing 945 individuals. With the help of approximately 60 volunteers who contributed 2,500 hours of service, supplemented by thousands of donated food items and the purchases of turkey, fresh produce, holiday essentials. And whereas the Goddard Lions Club continues its longstanding tradition of assembling and delivering fruit baskets filled with fruit, peanuts, and cabbages to approximately 150 older adults in the Goddard community, exemplifying the spirit of compassionate community and connection and connectivity. Whereas this program is a living testimony of the power of the community, collaboration, enduring commitment of volunteers who dedicated themselves to this cause, inspired by their own memories of service and generosity during the holiday season. Now I therefore, Mayor George W. Lee, Mayor of the City of Goddard, hereby recognize and honor the Goddard Mitten Tree Program for its decades of dedicated service to our community, spreading joy during the holiday season and embodying the true spirit of giving. I further proclaim that the next two Saturdays in the month of December be Mitten Tree Saturdays in our community. I further proclaim and express my gratitude to the countless volunteers, local organizations, and community members who contributed to the success of this vital program and encourage all citizens to continue to support it in uplifting the Goddard Mitten Tree and its mission. And this will be signed tonight, December 2nd, 2024. So many pieces of paper. I just, I think 2,500 hours of volunteer time is impressive. The, I've been told that we started with 379 mittens. We're down to the final three. Thanks for the chief and a couple of people over here picking up three. The Christmas tree fundraiser raised $1,850, which is $700 last year. We need three more mittens picked up. But after that, we still need donations, financial donations, and money for things like socks, basic clothing items, t-shirts, you know, the run-of-the-mill things. So I just want to thank the members of this community for their generosity, for their continuing support. And I know that the families that have received the assistance and the children that have will be forever impacted by our generosity. So I want to just thank everyone that just spent their time and volunteered to make this happen in our community. There's a lot of places it doesn't work this way. So I'm really proud to be a citizen of this community. Thank you for that. Did I miss anything? Any additional comments? We're good. All right, move along. Item G, I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Keep makes a motion.
I second.
Chris the seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished business. Moving on to new business. Item one. Brooke, mosquito fogging discussion.
Honorable Mayor Council, this item I want is on here because we have a lot of folks in the community interested in this. So we decided to bring it up in terms of consideration. Thank you, Terry. So during the summer months, on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, beginning 30 minutes after sundown, we typically spray the town using a fogger twice a week, of course. Begins in late April, early May, continues through late September, early October. Each session takes about five hours to cover the city. As I said, is scheduled every Tuesday or Thursday night, sort of 30 minutes after sunset. Chemical we use is malaphion. It's a synthetic organophosphate insecticide used to control mosquitoes and on fruit specials, on non-plant scrubs, or other types of little pet. Actually, it's also an ingredient some indoor pesticide products that treat pets for ticks, fleas, and ants. The mosquito management program, about $375 per week for 10 hours of employee overtime. We budget $12,500 annually for chemicals and repairs of the sprayer. In 2023... Oh, anyway, in 2024, looks like we're going to spend about $2,500, or $7,500 on chemical. In 2023, we spent $15,800 on a new fogger. And so essentially, there's no financials on this. It's been approved as the form, but what we're here for is the council to basically discuss if they want to continue this fogging program. If so, do you want to change the frequency, maybe one night a week? Do you want to continue it as it is currently being done? Or do we want to, or do you want to suspend it, you know, for a certain amount of time or indefinitely? If you choose to continue to spray, in an effort to try and get this out a little bit later, we would not start until 11:00 P.M., which would give us about another hour before we'd be out. I can answer some questions, but largely this is about discussion.
Your honor. We have talked about this before. I think we made a decision earlier this fall to discontinue the spraying for the rest of this year. At that time, we talked, we're going to bring this back by the end of the year. So this is kind of continuation of our discussions, so. I guess for me, here we go, is what was said this evening. I would either, one, just postpone the whole funding for 2025. I guess that's, and then that gives us a year to look at things. And it's either that or just discontinue it. It's just coming out of the stand, all right, so. My smear fish.
Yeah, I'm with you. Personally, I'd just choose to discontinue it at this time. And if there's people that we can talk to with knowledge of maybe other options in the future, that's great. But yeah, I personally just choose to discontinue indefinitely.
I agree.
I think her, it's, I guess you can put some light on it. Are we using anything different than the rest of the community's process here?
Not that I know of, but I have not gone out and asked all the other communities what they're using, so I can't answer that with 100% certainty.
Well, I do know that we had a discussion in my advisory council group. And there were some people on that group, there's 10 people in the community, that had incidents of West Nile virus. So you get the other side of things in spite of that. I think it was just an interesting discussion here, that not everybody holds the same position on anything, I guess. But anyway, just entertain a motion, or I'll make the motion to go ahead and hold on a second. Yes, Mayor, can I?
Sure.
Just a public comment.
Sure, go ahead. I don't think any of us in here are public health experts. But I just want to point out, in looking at the EPA, their website, they have a website dedicated to malaphion. And there is one question. Do malaphion products used for mosquito control pose health risks to humans? Answer, no. The 2024 draft human health risk assessment did not identify any human health risks of concern for malaphion use for mosquito control. The EPA, they go on. EPA is confident that aerial application is safe. So, you know, certainly the United States government and the EPA, and those guys are the experts. Certainly, they're of the opinion that this product is safe for use. So I just want there to be, you know, a fair and balanced discussion of this here tonight.
Any other comments? I just think that if I'm going to make an air in this type of situation, I want to err on the side of caution.
Certain.
I think that's an appropriate thing to do. So I'll make the motion that we discontinue mosquito fogging in the community indefinitely. Hold on a second.
Second.
I made the motion, keep in seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brooke, thank you. Moving on, Kansas Gas franchise ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, the city has franchise agreements with multiple utility companies that operate within the city limits of Goddard. This allows for them to place utilities such as gas lines, electric lines, within the cities dedicated right of way. These franchise agreements are adopted via ordinance through the governing body. And Kansas Gas, Kansas Gas Service's current franchise agreement is set to expire in 20, is set to expire in 2030. It's a 20-year, 20-year agreement. And so it was passed in late 2010. And these agreements do allow for periodically, periodically for them to be reviewed and to look at amending, potentially amending the franchise fee that is paid by these utility companies to the city of Goddard. We have reviewed the current agreement with Kansas Gas and asked our legal counsel to ask for an increase. So currently, so, and Kansas Gas has agreed to the increase. It's important to note that these franchise fees can be used to offset other tax increases, via sales tax, property tax increases. And so as we are a growing community and adding users to the various utilities, this is a way for us to diversify our revenue stream to fund city operations. Currently, the city of Goddard does, in their franchise agreement with Kansas Gas, does collect a 5% franchise fee. And we went to Kansas Gas and requested that to be increased by 1%, so increasing from 5% to 6%. This franchise fee is collected on a monthly basis, so Kansas Gas does send us a monthly, monthly check for that service. This new agreement, again, would be, it could be reviewed once after five years. And it does reset the clock for a new 20-year period. There would be a small elevation cost. Again, legal did help us draft the ordinance, and it has been reviewed and approved by Kansas Gas. Before you, this evening, we are requesting that you waive the reading of the ordinance and then approve the ordinance for the new franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service, again, amending that franchise fee from 5% to 6%. Once it's signed by, signed by the city, then it goes back to Kansas Gas. Once they have had a chance to, once they've signed it, it'll become effective. And so probably in one of the early billing cycles of 2025 is when that increase would actually go into effect. But again, stand for any questions, but very excited to, again, work with Kansas Gas in approving this new franchise agreement.
Is that the general mouth of other communities, or?
So 6%, if we see 6% of being, yeah, being that upper, that's the upper end of it. Going any higher than that, probably get more kickback and pushback from Kansas Gas.
That's all I mean, push that. Pushing back on that one. Maybe 6 is better than 5, right?
Yeah, 6 is better than nothing.
Very true.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
I second.
Chris the seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kind of like Chris. I'm making a motion to approve the ordinance for the franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service. Chris the seconds. Chris the seconds?
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we go on to agenda item I three, I was having some conversation with our city clerk. And I'd hate to ask this of you, if we could get a point of clarification back on agenda item I one? We didn't ask if there were any opposed, and we just want to make sure that for the record, we have the vote correct. So could we go back?
Let's just do a roll call.
Okay.
Room through it now.
You good with that, Terry? Agreed the roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
We're on, we're on.
Let's revisit.
Let's start completely over. State the motion, give a second, and then if you would like, we could do a roll call or a voice.
No, back and roll.
Roll us back there, Brooke. And I believe the motion was the third.
I made the motion to discontinue mosquito fogging indefinitely.
Second.
Keep in second. Roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, to discontinue.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes, to discontinue.
And Councilmember Collins?
Okay, motion carries for you, one. My apologies.
That's okay. I don't think it warrants more discussion.
No, that's, that's fair. Okay. Item three.
Item three.
Item three, I think we're about ready there.
All right, so this item is a, to advertise for bids for a new salt shed for Public Works. During winter storm response, Public Works utilizes road salt as one of several tools to clear ice and snow from the roadways. It ensures, to ensure its effectiveness and environmental safety, road salt is purchased in bulk before winter and stored in over the front structure. The storage method protects the salt from water damage and prevents it from leaking into the soil. The current salt structure is over 15 years old and in poor condition. Features walls made of stacked cement blocks and a hand-built wooden roof. Over time, blocks have settled and moved apart, and the roof has developed multiple leaks. These issues allow water to mix with the salt, making it less effective and increasing the risk and allowing some of the salt to reach into the ground. Public Works is seeking approval to solicit bids for the construction of a new salt storage facility. The proposed building would be located on a portion of city-owned armland situated north of Public Works Yard and the wastewater treatment plant. This professionally constructed structure will feature a soft top design measuring 52 feet by 60 feet long with durable cement walls and an asphalt floor. The facility will have the capacity to store approximately 200 tons of road salt and should meet the city's needs and Public Works' needs for the next 20 years. This is a picture of our existing facility. It's old at least, and we've outgrown it. We can't even get the salt back in there enough to keep it out of the weather a lot of times. So as you see, when it rains, we get some of that salt reaches out and gets in the ground. K D A G has not cited us for that, but they have mentioned in their, in their inspections that we need to address that. So this is our existing building from the east side. This is it looking out from the north side. This is what we're proposing. It's your, it's your typical soft top building that you see a lot of, a lot of places. You'll see them on the sides of highways where KDOT stores, there's that, Central County, other cities use them. Where we're proposing to put it is on the city-owned, on a portion of the city-owned armland, just as I said, north of the treatment facility. So here's 199th Street. There's the electric substation. You can see the big high line going across. So what we will do is construct a 22-foot road and then just have this packed and, and we'll have a 200 by 300-foot gravel lot. And that's where we put the building in there. The buildings that we're looking at, we've already done a little bit of investigation on it. And the buildings we're looking at offer 15- to 20-year warranties on the top. So the facility will last that long, and it's to be warranted for that long. So if we're bringing the approximately $250,000 cost will be allocated towards capital improvement fund and potentially a special highway fund. And the CFO and I have talked about that. She'll make those determinations, you know, once we receive the bid, and then actual cost, and it will break to council. We will disprove this reform. If you have any questions, it is recommended that city council authorize Public Works to solicit bids for a salt storage facility. We're good. Any questions?
Yeah, so we definitely need one. Why do we need one big enough to store 20 years' worth of salt?
Because it will leave a 20-year warranty. Let's get one big enough that it lasts 20 years of use.
Here's, you're conflating that. Not 20 years of salt, we get 20 years of life.
20 years of salt.
A whole lot of salt.
Our salt mountain will be a new foundation. We can speed year-round down.
We don't buy salt.
I just, salt lines going out of business, dude.
When I read it the first time, I read it that way, too.
I don't think you can just move a salt mine. I think you better have salt.
That's, I was just confused.
No, but we do want it big enough so as we grow, we ask.
Yeah. I was just making sure.
Any additional questions?
Aubrey, you're in, eh?
No, I was thinking the same thing.
So we can probably fit 2 million tons of salt there for 20 years? I don't know.
Okay, all right, come back. Chris, do you get it?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to approve the solicitation for bids for salt storage building.
I make the motion to authorize Public Works to solicit bids for salt storage building.
Chris makes a motion.
I'll take it.
Aubrey seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're going to do the old building. We're going to tear it down.
If we. I damaged the clicker.
Yeah, it's like all of a sudden just clicked.
Honorable Mayor?
Yes, sir.
City Council, I am here to present agenda item I four. I'm Craig Cross at your city administrator. This is the Goddard Apartments Development Agreement and the Industrial Revenue Bond Intent Resolution. So if you recall, earlier this year, we had executed a development agreement with Goddard Housing. However, that development agreement included the incorporation of what's called the REID, Investment Housing Inc. District. R H I D is what we commonly refer to it as. And unfortunately, one of the other agencies in our area used their authority to veto the establishment of the R H I D, which in effect made the development agreement null and void. So the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to consider executing the modified development agreement, which does not include the R H I D, as well as considering the approval of the Industrial Revenue Bond Intent Resolution. If you remember, back in October, we had a public hearing in relation to this IRB as a prerequisite to be able to consider the intent resolution this evening. Within your agenda packet, there were a, there was a. Within your agenda packet, there were a, there was a bullet of the incentives within the development agreement that was attached from exhibit A. I wanted to make sure that you guys were able to kind of pick that out and be able to read that easily instead of, you know, having to try to pull it from the very lengthy development agreement. Just as a reminder, this project is supported by the Modern Income Housing Grant the city acquired from Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, an amount of $2 million. So that requires that there is income verification, that the tenants of the apartments would be within the income, modern income housing ranges, so. No financial this evening, and the legal team has approved this as deformed. The development agreement has been endorsed by the developer, and should you guys approve the development agreement as well as the intent resolution this evening, there may be one or two additional procedural items we'll need to clear, but this is kind of the big hurdle we need to leap to get this project underway. Martin Haney is here on behalf of the developer, he's the principal architect on the process, of the project, excuse me, so he may be able to answer any design-related questions about the facility. You know, we've been working on this one for a long time, this one predates my start with the city a year ago. This will be our first new apartment complex in our community. The apartments that we have in the city were built in the fifties, and then within the school district, there's really nothing of new age either, we found during the RHID process when we were kind of researching what was out there, so this will create an opportunity for an affordable living situation for folks, and it's something that we're excited to be able to bring to our community. It's definitely a missing piece to our housing stock, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Hopefully, this is new news to you guys, we've been working on this one for quite a while, so.
Would you mind pulling up exhibit B, which is the Modern Income Housing income range?
I don't have it.
It's up there.
Can you pull up the agenda packet, Sarah, exhibit B? I'd play some elevator music or something. Other questions?
We kind of talked about that, this privately, just maybe we'll make sure that people know that this is an income-based housing, that the ranges for the incomes are, you know, go by the number of individuals, people living in the apartments, but.
The income ranges are quite wide, and I find there a lot of times people confuse low-income of moderate income, this is clearly not the case.
Right, and that's why I thought maybe a good idea just to make sure everybody take a look at this and see. If you had three people in one of the apartments, the high-end range of a hundred and twenty-three thousand and a million is around about fifty. And I don't understand, dare to understand the full reporting scope of what they did to go through for the tracking of the grant, but that's probably not a question for an architect either, but.
I can elaborate on some of that, so rent concurrent with the development agreement is the grant agreement with the state of Kansas, as well as what we call the cooperative agreement, which essentially obligates the developer or his or her agents to complete all of their reporting. Of course, it'll be verified by the city before it goes to the state, but we want to make sure that we have some guardrails in place there to ensure that should any of the grant requirements not be met, the city wouldn't be liable for those repercussions, which could include paying back some of that $2 million grant. That will solely be with the developer, if they don't accommodate to the grant requirements.
And those are, what, ten years, fifteen years? I'm trying to remember.
On the reporting? I don't have that.
I was thinking, they're held to that for at least ten years.
It's, I won't want to speculate.
I know, but it's not, it's not a one-year deal and then it turns over, so.
Yeah, and I think Kevin may be able to answer this, I think they're required to hold the property for an amount of years as well, that way they can just build it, fill it, and sell it. Was there anything you wanted to add? Kevin Callen, our bond counsel, and Ryan Peck, city attorney, of course, have been heavily involved in this process. There's been a lot of contractual work that's going on and plenty of meetings, the mayor and I, the mayor and I have testified in a couple of county meetings, I'll call it testified, but these guys could provide further information if they want to, or if you guys have additional questions, I can answer, I'm sure they'd be happy to pitch in.
Pete, you have any questions, sir? Question?
Do you want to pull the motion, the slide back up?
Aubrey, go.
Yeah.
Christopher? We are not offering anything different than what we approved back in March, April.
From a dollar value standpoint, the difference is inconsequential, the vehicles are a little different when you talk RHID versus IRB, and some of the other items.
All right. So, yeah.
I'd like to make the motion, developer as mayor, to keep the development agreement with the Goddard Housing LLC attached to exhibit B.
Aubrey's made the motion.
Second.
Pete in seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number two.
Move to the DOPA, intent resolution attached to exhibit B.
Aubrey's made the motion.
Second.
Pete in seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
That's all there is?
For this round, we'll see what, yeah. There are probably one or two other things. Kevin, do you want to elaborate on what comes next procedurally as far as the IRB's concerned, just real quickly? That's okay, mayor?
That'd be great.
Kevin Callen with Gilmoreville, city bond counsel, what comes next is probably wait for a while to take formal action. What's been approved will allow the developer to start moving. Or, same things, there's a start date requirement in the development agreement and the cooperative agreement, which I believe is July first, or, or, is that? Okay. That's associated with the MIH grant, so in the early part of next year, I would expect the project to commence. Sometimes the industrial revenue bonds are issued at the outset of a project, and sometimes they're issued at the conclusion, and there's construction financing used in the meantime. So if there's construction financing that's not the IRB, you may not have anything to consider on this until, you know, late next year, maybe even into 2025, once construction is wrapping up and IRBs need to be issued. So look for that either early next year, my best guess is they'll probably utilize some construction financing and then use the bonds once construction is complete.
All right. That's great news.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item, retail attractions and proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, once again, you'll pay for me on this item. So you guys have likely heard as much as us city staff, but our citizens have called on us to attract more commercial retail to our community, more often the Garrett, in relation to, you know, dining restaurants, and luckily we've made some headway in that regard, but we're still a little bit behind when it comes to really doing a good job of telling our story. This community has a ton of intangibles when it comes to, you know, our school districts, all the new housing, the highway, the Starbond District, you know, regional tourism attraction, taking the wildlife park, and these are really unique things, and you put them all together, I mean, we're a five-tool player, if you want to use a baseball term, so we've done a poor job of making that known, and so I think that by bringing into groups such as retail attractions, we'll have somebody out there that's got the Rolodex and the relationships to help tell our story, so that's what this agenda item is about. Retail Attractions Inc., here's some of the actual deliverables that they would provide. I don't want to go through the whole bullet list, it was provided in the agenda packet as well, but I think the main thing is just focusing on strategic recruitment for us so we can fill out the commercial retail parcels, not only the Starbond District, but there's also great value in some other parcels around Kellogg and otherwise perhaps Main Street. So we're excited about this opportunity, there's other communities in our area that have taken this route as well, and so I kind of wish it was one we did a few years ago, I think to be a little further ahead, but here we are today to look forward, so if there aren't questions, we can go ahead and look at the motion, but from a financial perspective, it's a, there's a retainer of $3,000 per month, that's going to come out of general fund discretionary line item. Our legal team, city attorney Ryan Peck, has approved this to form, and with that, there's your recommendation.
So this could lead us to a Buc-Ee's?
I don't want to make any promises. Maybe, maybe a Love's or Twenty-four Seven, you know, we'll get one, our first Buc-Ee's is coming Kansas City area, hopefully they do well, maybe we'll, we'll get them down here, but the highway presents a lot of opportunities, we're getting 20,000 daily vehicles, and that's only going up, so we just approved some residential density, these retailers love residential density, vertical residential projects, bringing this group into the, onto the team, I think we can start having some pretty cool opportunities, but I like the way you're reaching for the stars there, yeah.
Well, I guess the thing I like about it is it combines a level of expertise in terms of economic development, that's, if we had to hire someone to do the same thing, it would be three times more expensive, and I think it takes the pressure off our staff to try to do this in addition to everything else that they're doing, so I think if, I mean, it's an annual contract, we can let it run for a couple of years and see what results take place. I know in some communities in the state of Kansas, they spend millions of dollars a year and sometimes don't, we've seen any benefit from the money just staying and trying to develop things economically, so I think it's definitely worthy of, you know, maybe a trial run and, you know, a couple of years, and you know it's maybe one of the Buc-Ee's, so.
So, I'm not trying to cause drama or anything. Hold on, I just, I want to word this carefully, I'm not coming after anybody, okay? Can you explain the difference between this person's job and our beautiful Micah Skoggin, who's our community development director?
Of course, so.
I drink coffee.
Primarily, in a community of our size, six thousand or less, your community development director is going to be focused on zoning administration. Now, when we brought Micah on, that's private, almost what his entire job was, and as his skill sets evolved, and, you know, of course, now he's got his AICP, he's been doing a lot more of the, he's been assisting a lot more in the recruitment, but that's not his main focus, and we really need him to be focusing on the zoning administration. When you consider the 175 new places for families to live that were created this year and what we anticipated moving forward, navigating those entitlements through his office takes a ton of time, so, and he does a great job at that. He will still be involved in having meetings with Retail Attractions Inc., but they've got the relationships. If I learned anything out of my first year, where I spent a ton of time with Micah and others, meeting with franchisors, franchisees, for sure retailers, restaurants, et cetera, you know, it's just a tough hill to climb when you don't have the relationships established already, and you're not approving commodities, so to speak, I think this is the route, so his office will still have some involvement in it, but primarily lots of zoning administration going on through there when you think about all of the residential projects that we have to work on. Micah, feel free to add to that, hopefully I'm not underselling your amazing work.
Don't drink, no, I'm just, what, Craig is right, I mean, the big thing that you're paying for is the relationships, that's, it took Starbucks two years, we reached out to Starbucks in 2019, they said call us back in two years, and so I called them back in two years, and then they're like, well, we'll consider, show me the numbers, and then show me the numbers again, and then show me the numbers again, so really what you're paying for is I, the gentleman who's with Retail Attractions, who's Ricky Hayes, I read his books, he's pretty good, he's pretty on point, but the big thing is his relationships and just his, he's a go-getter, like he wants, he's in their face, he calls them, he's got their numbers, and he just continues to follow through like a bulldog and gets the people for those cities, because he's not wrong, I mean, when you read what he wrote, every city thinks they're the best city, and then they reach out to Starbucks, and Starbucks is like, you're one of 700 cities, why should I come to your city? When 700 other cities have better metrics, better density, and better car, better car counts than your city does, and so Ricky Hayes is the one who kind of greases the wheel and helps get in front of them and say, hey, this is why Goddard is better than those 700 other cities, not just because they paid me, but let's look at their data, my data that I'm going to provide to Ricky is also what he's going to use to put together these portfolios to put in front of those branch managers and site select criteria and just be like, hey, this is why Goddard meets what you want and why you want to be at Goddard, so he's going to really help kind of put us in the fourth gear. I hope that answers that question.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
And then how will that, how will that process work out? We're going to pay them monthly, will he bring something monthly to us in that way? Or will he just do this for a year and bring us all the data and information, or will it just be a continuing process as long as we have him retained?
More of a continuing process. I anticipate if we approve this tonight, that there'll be a pretty large amount of effort by staff to get with them for a discovery phase, to where they'll start packaging all the intangibles, as I put them, and put a plan in place, and then there will be progress checks and things of that nature, well, where we will be meeting with them, they'll set up meetings, have conversations on our behalf as well, and those sorts of things, so if you would like council, or, excuse me, staff to come to council maybe quarterly or bimonthly and just let you know where some of, what some of the progress, you know, progress points are, I want to be careful in not, you know, over-promising anything. From the time you have that meeting with one of these commercial retailers to the time you've got a project, it could take two to three years, as Micah, to share with you, so these things don't happen overnight, you really got to go for a couple of years to see what, you know, to see that happen, so.
I do like the, I agree with what you said earlier, I wish we would have started something like this a few years ago maybe, but the timing of this with the development that's happening is awesome, so I'd like to see those kind of timing in there. These apartments are going to be huge for getting some of these restaurants in, so I'm trying to have somebody focused on that, we can forget our money.
As our city portfolio builds, right, it wouldn't be constantly updated and marketed, is that right?
Yes.
You know, you couldn't pay the staff members three months to get that done, especially with this resource that's kind of, you know, so.
All right. Someone like to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the contract with Retail Attractions Incorporated, seen attached me today.
A second.
Pete makes the motion, Chris the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm doing what I can to be up here more than Mike.
We're going to win tonight's, I think we're going to win tonight's lottery, I think.
I got this one, but I'm still waiting on it until it's for. I said it's a resolution amending master fee schedules to include water meter and inspection. A little bit of history, in 2014, council established a consolidated master fee schedule. From time to time, these fees are amended to accurately reflect costs associated with the services and infrastructure provided by the city. Staff is asking to amend the master fee schedule to help offset costs associated with growth and development. When contractor calls that water meter installed for new build, if the meter can is damaged, we're changing, okay, in the interest of better efficiency and less fewer manpower, man-hours on the site, we're changing the process in how we deal with installing water meters. As it goes now, the long service line and the can with, including the setter, the setter, the ring and wind, everything is installed when all the water infrastructure is put in. Problem I have with that, in the months from when that's done and the builder gets done building the home, even though we've marked it GPS that they run it over, they beat it up, they smash it into the ground, and they essentially demolish it about 70% of the time. So generally, it takes about 10 minutes, 15 minutes to put a meter in, sometimes it's taking us two hours to rehab the can. Instead of one guy going in and putting in 10 meters in one day, we've got two guys up there working all day and maybe getting two to three meters in. So what we decided to do is change our process on that, we're not going to have the main tap, we're not going to have a long line run, and we're not going to have the meter can installed until the home is ready for a meter. And that is a new policy, and the developers are all aware of it, they'll have to hire a contractor, go in there, tap that main, run that long, put that setter, that can and setter in. At that point, they can request a water meter, and we'll go out and inspect the can, and if they're. They'll have to hire a contractor, go in there, tap that name, run that long, put that setter, that can and setter in. At that point, they can request a water meter and we'll go out and inspect the can. And if everything is in good working condition, we will install the meter. If they cobble it together and they think, well, the city will come here and fix it for us and spend their manpower, we won't do it. We will, we will send them, if you pass this, this fee schedule change, we'll basically send them an inspection fee for two hundred and fifty dollars and say, we'll come back and, and solve it once you've fixed everything. If we go back the same time, we'll charge them another two hundred and fifty dollars. The whole point is to get them to do it right the first time and put it in good working condition so we can save a ton of man hours and if then what they need in time we manage. So essentially that's why we brought this. So when contractor calls that, that meter installed, if that, if that infrastructure is damaged or not ready for the meter, we'll charge them the two fifty, as I said. And then they can call us and we'll go back and install it if, and re-inspect it and install it the second time it is put together. And as I said, also each occurrence, regardless of the location, frequency, we'll be considered a separate occurrence and a defeat shall apply. So what I'm asking the city council to is, to do is amend the fee schedule. Um, print resolution, amend the master fee schedule, the changes as you see below. It would simply be water meter can reinspection, two hundred and fifty dollars per inspection. Financials, none. Um, this was approved before by, um, city's attorneys, Robert Quickendall of Morris Lane. Do you have any questions?
So the procedure's already rewritten?
The procedure's rewritten and we go into Mike and he's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, like it, but you have, um, transmitted that out to the different developers and their engineers.
Yeah, so we're trying to disseminate the information to everybody. Typically you're gonna see some of the home builders are gonna still have static copies, which just means that they printed it out and they have an old form. So when they bring in the old form, we'll have to inform them when they come in that this process has changed and that they're gonna have to hire their own partners.
You know, it, it's all on the new, they do go implement. And so when Mike has talked about his old form, some of the builders will print off a bunch of copies and keep them in a folder and fill it out by hand, but they'll have to.
So is that something maybe if we do it previous, or we just send out a notice?
Yeah, we will continually inform everybody.
Yes, I mean, that's.
It'll be an ongoing conversation, but we'll continually inform people in the process. They'll pick it up after a second of their time.
There's currently no fee associated with the damages that are occurring.
What we're doing right now is we'll go out there and we will replace the parts and charge it for the parts, but we don't recover the man hours. And we're getting with, with some of these subdivisions, we're receiving a request to install twenty or thirty meters at a time. And if we get there in half of those, if half those cans are demolished like they are, it is a big endeavor. It's a lot of our time up to, to clean those cans out and then replace the parts with that meter. So this puts that burden back on the, on the builder. Um, isn't really costing them any more money if they put it in right the first time. They're not gonna get charged any of that.
We good? I'm taking a motion to approve this. Making a motion to adopt the resolution for amending the master fee schedule to include the changes listed in the resolved.
A second.
Keith makes a motion, Chris the second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is mine too.
All right.
Like I said, I'm up here to, I'll do the mic at some accent. I'm quite as fast and, you know, articulate as he is, but at least I'm up here. Okay, so, um, I said it is one eighty-third street, US fifty-four intersection, Bitawar. Um, little history, in December of twenty-three, the city submitted for access management agreement with the state of Kansas, seeking funding for the addition of turn lanes at the intersection of one eighty-third street and US fifty-four, Telon. Um, January twenty-fifth of twenty-four, state approved the agreement, committed to cover a hundred percent of the construction costs for the proposed turn lanes up to a maximum of one million dollars. City is responsible for all design, engineering and field services expenses associated with the project. Um, believe design and engineering has already been done, of course, and field services will be done by Trans Systems. Little, little bit more history, a little, um, February twenty-four, senior agreement, Trans Systems provided necessary services for the project. Um, KDOT submitted a contract between the state and the city authorizing us to make improvements in the state's ride-away. Trans Systems completed design plans for improvements one eighty-third, US fifty-four. Council approved the advertisement of that RFP on September sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Um, on October fourteenth, twenty-four, twenty-four, it was advertised and the bid opening was held November nineteenth. The RFP allowed bidders to submit pricing options for upgrades in using asphalt or concrete. Six companies provided bids with concrete, three of those also included asphalt quotes. Um, bidders are here below. We had everything from one point one day, but that bid was, was thrown out because it was invalid because there were some errors in their bidding document, all the way to the low bid, which was provided by Product Construction. City chose Product Construction because they are the low bid. We did some research on them and Trans Systems gave them a thumbs up. KDOT said they had completed jobs with them, they're doing jobs with the city of Wichita. And so we're confident they can complete this work in a timely manner with the quality that we need. Any questions?
So, I mean, when we had talked about it, we had said we wanna rip off the mandate, sixty working days, right?
Correct.
And then if they don't finish those sixty working days, then there's fees.
Liberated damages.
Okay. Now, what I'm curious about, I'm sure we've asked this earlier, I'm sorry. What is defined as a working day compared to a, they could be working today and are choosing not to?
I'm gonna let Harland Ford, our city engineer, answer that because there may be some specifics that I can't answer, but it's, it's pretty simple with it, Harland.
Well, a working day is defined as any day that weather allows them to work. You know, now if rain comes in like by ten AM of the morning and, and shuts them down, they probably wouldn't be counted that. But it's typically, uh, Monday through Friday. However, if they choose, they can work Saturday, but they are charged a day for that. But they are not required to work on a Sunday. So it's, it's kind of, uh, but they're only charged for Monday through Friday, uh, if they choose or, uh, subject to weather. And, and as opposed to like a calendar day where you're charged every day of the month that you see. So it's up to the inspector, you have to make some decisions out there in the field as to, based on whether or not they can proceed with a, a, a full, a majority of a, of a working or construction day to complete their work.
But like if the weather was very much allowing them to, and for some reason they chose not to work that day, that would get counted.
They get counted a working day and that counts against their sixty.
Yes. And sixty is just for the north half?
It's all, it's the whole project.
It's all lit.
The whole project, okay.
I, I spoke with Product Construction, they asked them to be in attendance, they said they would try, uh, obviously they did not show up. Um, they say they can start the project quickly and they are, they're, they're confident they can finish around sixty-eight hundred.
So we're shutting the north side down completely?
Correct.
And the south side?
It'll remain open, um, but I think it'll be one way in and out. Harland may need to verify that for us and we can.
Are we just, we're adding a lane to the east side of that south leg?
Gotcha.
So I don't know, they may be able to do that under construction.
Okay.
Just by coning it off.
We'll, we'll bring you guys a traffic control plan well before this kicks off.
I noticed the, the general concept was shut down the north side completely.
Yep.
Leave the south side open. I just wanted to be sure that was kind of the general gist, uh, that was my recollection.
And the front of drug realignment behind First National Bank, that's gonna make this a little easier during that full shutdown. So I think it's outside the construction limits if I'm not mistaken. So it'll be a kind of a, an additional route to get in and out there. We will bring a traffic control plan to council and, and share that amongst the broader public at least a few weeks before we start.
Round two of orange cones.
It's only gonna keep coming, uh, but the good news is, is this project's covered a hundred percent construction by the state agency and we're very thankful for that.
That's true, very fortunate.
You know, and, and as Craig said, it's a hundred percent covered by KDOT. The bid and low bid did come back at eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents. Just to be clear on that. Um, legal is approved as a form. If there are no additional questions, it is recommended that the city council move to award the bid of Product Construction an amount of eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents.
I wanna take a motion, hold it. I'll make the motion. Okay, Keith, you ready to prove it? Oh yeah, please do, just for the record. We're trying to do things formally after the line.
I'm making a motion to move to award the bid up to Creo Construction amount of eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and six-two cents.
I'm sorry to do this, Mr. Mc. Could I ask the councilman to modify his motion to add a fifteen percent contingency to that? I don't know why it slipped my mind to discuss that at a staff level. I think it's a little easier decision when it's the state's money we're playing with here, but I, I do believe it's necessary that we have a contingency there in case there's circumstances.
Yes, make the motion to include a fifteen percent contingency for the bid of Creo Construction amount of eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents. Second.
Harland's made the motion, Keith the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Hopefully the state's okay, didn't find out.
I think the record is we can all amend the emotion, the amended motion.
Okay, I'm gonna be the thing where I stand here to the side for the goals discussion because this is a little more, more of a two-way workshop here. But, uh, you know, back in the early parts of this year in January, when we're all kind of just getting to know one another, um, seems like that was just yesterday, but in some ways it seems like it was eons ago. But, um, you know, it was important that we came together and we took a look at where we had been and, and kind of had an idea of where we wanted to go. So we held a special workshop in January of twenty twenty-four and we reviewed the city's comprehensive plan, the strategic plan and the business plan. I, I kind of think of that like, uh, you know, umbrellas with the comp plan being the big umbrella, the strategic plan being a smaller umbrella after that, and then below it, the business plan being the smallest umbrella, so to speak. I don't know if that makes sense to you guys, but it does in my head. They all kind of work together, one's overarching and then they kind of tier downward. Um, through that review process, we developed annual goals for twenty twenty-four. And then we broke those into adaptive goals, which are your goals that, you know, they've got some variables, there's some context, there's multiple stakeholders. Not something that, you know, you can accomplish with one or two quick actions, something that's gonna take some time. Then we have the action goals, which maybe are things you could complete with two, three or four actions. And then we have the technical goals, or as I also refer to them as the low hanging fruit, something that we could take care of relatively quickly. Uh, since we established those goals, uh, we also modified the Goddard Business Plan, which is the second illustration hanging on the wall over there from the left. We Xed out some of the items that we felt like were accomplished, uh, we modified and then we add to that. Uh, we last progress checked our twenty twenty-four goals in October. We had a couple of other progress checks before that. I think it's important that we go and take a, um, a look and see on, on how we had worked towards accomplishing those. And so we are doing the year-end review tonight. This will be pretty quick, uh, because the good news is, is we did pretty good this year. I think the council and the staff and the community should be proud of the work that was achieved. Uh, looking at the adaptive goals first, you'll see we had goals one through five here. Uh, those came out of the Goddard Business Plan. Uh, you got amenities, entertainment, high-quality parks and rec, beautification of public space, community connectedness and housing. If you look at that Goddard Business Plan over there on the wall, you'll see the smaller text in the columns that goes underneath each of those five. You'll be able to tell by looking at our slide here that there's less bullet points for each of those columns. That's because we took some of those out, we felt like we'd already accomplished them. Here is what remained. One of the modifications, which is kind of exciting, I didn't think about this, but housing, the first bullet right there, we accomplished that one tonight with a couple of votes for the, uh, modern income housing project, which of course will be located in the, um, Starbond District. So, um, even tonight, we were furthering our goals, so, uh, that's always cool. Uh, the action goals, so moving on from adaptive to the action goals, the rural water district, four territory agreements and pump station projects. So Harland Ford here in CEDPA worked extremely hard last week to get this, uh, RFP out the door. A very, very thorough document. I'm really impressed with his work to, to kind of cram that money, get it done, uh, so we could get that advertised. And hopefully on December sixteenth, we will, uh, be awarding a low bid, uh, to a company to construct that pump station. I'm gonna get into that in more detail in the admin report, so I'm gonna leave that one there for now. North Park Phase One, you guys received the master plan in Phase One presentation, uh, the final draft of that, uh, last month. And we anticipate that we could have a design, engineering and bid letting occur at some point next year. Uh, in January, we're gonna look at requesting cost and qualifications from firms to, uh, basically drill down on Phase One schematic design and get it into fine detail, constructible document that could be sent out to bid. So lots of great ideas came out of our workshop, I think it was two weeks ago. And so we'll incorporate some of that and then really kind of start whittling away and getting that to a point to where we're saying, okay, this is what we're comfortable spending, these are the elements that we must have. Let's get that into a construction document form that we could send out, uh, and get bids from contractors to build the new park. Uh, it's very realistic that, uh, if, if things continue on the current path, that we've got a shovel on the ground in a new park sometime next year, probably in quarter two. The water pressure model master plan, so we got the final draft, uh, a couple of days before Turkey Day. And then, um, we would anticipate a potential presentation at council on the sixteenth. I'm gonna have a question for you guys about the timing of that during my admin report, so I'll stick a pin in that there. Uh, but we do have the final draft back. Uh, the stormwater and drainage assessment, so you can see some of the benchmarks that we've surpassed there. Uh, kind of a couple of priority items that we're gonna really focus on. Uh, the first part of twenty twenty-five, we'll be getting the Meads Park issue. Uh, I made a promise that we'd have that taken care of before the pool season. Now that Harland's kind of got, uh, a lot of the heavy lifting done on the pump station, we're gonna, uh, get it recalibrated back to, to finishing up, putting together the, the plan so we can find a contractor to go do the grading at Meads Park. That way you don't have to walk through a moat to get to the pool. The other one is, we already awarded a bid to do the Prairie Edition Drainage Project. Uh, the First and Backup Inc. was awarded that contract several months ago and they still have not shown up to do the work. So at some point, you know, we may consider looking at the next qualified bidder if we can't get them out here. Uh, we'd like to be able to get them out, but when it was time for them to go, we had a ton of rain, torrential rain. And so I don't know if they moved on to something else and haven't circled back to us or what, but, um, maybe I'll give you an update on that next council meeting. The SCADA system, so we're in a tiny bit of a holding pattern there. The bids we receive are good through January. We're gonna need to award a bid at some point in January, we're gonna have to re-advertise. Uh, the project is exorbitantly expensive, but it's very much so a necessity. Uh, we wanted our staff to have some time to go visit some of the facilities that are utilizing these systems within the proposals that we received as a part of the request for bids process. I believe some of those, uh, tours have taken place already. So, uh, now that we're through Thanksgiving, I think in the next week or two, our staff's gonna refocus attention to coming to a decision on, um, whether or not we're gonna award a bid to company A or company B. We got two bids on that. Maple Street walking path, that's more so a county-driven project. Uh, I'm hearing through the grapevine that they're trying to push that back because of another agency that's in the area that's contemplating a capital improvement next door to it. Uh, staff's doing its best to try to, to thumb that along, but, um, they're bigger agencies than us, so it doesn't always work out in our favor. But we're gonna keep trying to make something happen in that regard. One eighty-third turn lane's project, enough said there. Twenty twenty-four roadway projects complete. Harland's team has been gathering survey, uh, getting the design put together for, uh, the next year of our, we call it the five million and five-year program, uh, finishing, uh, First Street and then doing all of Third Street between Walnut and one ninety-ninth. Uh, that's what the twenty twenty-five roadway projects look like. I'm sure when we do twenty twenty-five goals in January during our retreat, we'll wanna slip that one in there. Uh, the RFP for designing project management and the way finding and welcoming monument signage. Ryan Trak told me I should tell you installations will begin in December twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five, so. Now, it is possible, you may cringe when I say this, but, uh, you know, some of these are located in areas where again, we're dealing with other agencies and their bureaucracy. So, um, it's possible that aspects of this project aren't completed for many, many more months. So, it's possible that aspects of this project aren't completed for many, many more months, which is why, because we went action tomorrow, we're going to go ahead and get the ones installed that are in our right-of-way, and I think that's eight signs.
Eight of the way, hind signs, yes.
So, eight of them should go in sometime this month, and then the rest of them are just going to keep pushing, all those other agencies, to get their approved, get them approved, so we can get those in too.
You don't want to just do it and then ask for forgiveness?
No. I don't want you to do that to me, stop going to do it to them, you know. You know, they've probably got a backhoe that they could take them out with, so. Downtown Streetscape Project, so we brought Garver in to start that, high-level preliminary concepts and estimating. That's pretty much, just the purpose of that is to get that factored into our tenure capital improvement program. We've got a long list of lobbying activity, grant activity, legislative conversations. More recently, met with Representative Cyward last week. We hired LGR to help us with the grocery tax and Starbond issue. We've been working with Senator Blasey quite a bit, and then a couple of grants, one of which we won. We've got a meeting with Secretary KDOT here this month to discuss a pretty important regional project. So, I think staff has done a great, and your colleagues in the board have done a good job of making that a priority. So, we're finding out that we work better together, we can get more things done by having these relationships, so. The website, Ryan and Micah and Sarah, they're on our committee there. They've been working really hard over the last several months to get the website and the app up. I believe we're launching in a couple of weeks.
You know, mid-January.
Mid-January. So, it seemed like it was already to go, and we were talking amongst each other, and there was a lot of broke links pre-existing from our old site that didn't get fixed even with the new one. And like, well, let's not launch this till we get those fixed. That way, when it's time to go, everything's in good operating condition. So, we're getting closer there. And once we get the website launched, then we'll focus our attention on the app. So, excited about those developments, but I anticipate we'll have most of that cleared out through the first quarter of next year. Single stream trash, you guys know what's going on there, so we had the resolution of the 10th on November 18th. Single hauler, another way to put it, I've heard it called single stream, but in May of 2025, we'll have the hearing where we'll hear comments on the Organized Waste Plan that our team's currently putting together in consideration of adopting ordinance to allow plant adoption and then circulate the RFP. So, even if you guys approve everything on May, still got quite a road ahead till we get bids back and you make a final determination, and then if this is approved, the program would come into play. So, encourage our citizens to continue providing their sentiment on that to city staff and the council. If council have questions, bring it our way. The property for additional public facilities, we've got one acre that we should be closing on in the next week or two. Got the Tyler research back and a couple of things there that we're working through. Don't really have any others on our prospect list at this point. We're starting to lean more back in the direction of utilizing our 15 to 20 acres where the salt sheds going for other facility needs. The RACE Grant, we actually won a better grant, a bigger grant in lieu of that one, which we did not apply for because it just took a ton of time. And then, of course, the vestering overpass grant was not awarded, but we intend to use the same materials and improve upon them to submit those next year. Looks like I accidentally glazed over the Mayor's Advisory Council. We met four times this year. Our last meeting was on November 20th. Salt storage, we saw we had some progress on that tonight. Linear Park Lighting, I was told by my colleague Brooke that the staff were able to start getting in there and clearing out some of that concrete rubble that's kept us from looping with power those last couple of lights, so we'll be excited to put that one to bed and hopefully it's been enjoyed by the second and third shifters that have been able to get out and exercise in the dark and feel a little more safe. We did have two professional PDGA-B disc golf tournaments this year with fantastic turnouts. The Trail Connectors, so the bridge, I believe, has been ordered, if it hasn't been, it will be this week, for the Trail Connectors coming out of the residential areas of town. We finally found a bridge package that we like, and so we're getting that ordered, and then we'll have that work completed within the next few weeks, assuming that we can get MBI out to do the work. This could be another situation where if they don't come as they have committed to, we're going to look elsewhere because we've got other bids that we can consider. I already spoke on the Beans Park improvements, Linear Park, they started relocating the, they finished relocating the trees there today, all the play equipment's in it, and so that one's well on your way too. Lots of hiring this year, we've had a little bit of churn. Our city planner, Tina Powell, she's worked out pretty well. Thanks for being with us here tonight, Tina. She's been here with us eight, nine months?
February will be a year.
All right, coming up on a year. Ryan just had his six-month anniversary, November 30th. We did hire two Public Works employees, but we had two who departed. We do intend to hire two more because our goal has been to grow by two, but we're going to start hiring for those here pretty quickly. Our new customer, Care Clerk Kayla, has been a fantastic hire. Of course, we brought her in to get Sarah prepared for succession to our city clerk role. That seems to be going really well also. Terry did give us an updated retirement date. I got to ask her first if I'm okay to share, so I'll let you know on that pretty soon. We're looking, are we advertising for police clerk?
Not yet.
We will be advertising for new police clerk in the coming days, I'm told. And then I believe we'll be looking at adding another patrol officer position first of the year to come in next year, and we have one who'll start KLET-C.
January.
January, so. Progresses being made there on the hiring front. We do also have a new Chief Financial Officer, Brooke Carroll, sitting here at the end of the table. Well, you've worked two, three months now?
Oh, we've almost four months.
Feels like you've been here a lifetime.
I know.
You're doing great.
Forty years already.
And it's a good thing.
Yes. The staff churn is just, this is how it is in our industry, and it's gone really well. We've had some good move-ins and move-outs, and we're pretty excited about the team that we've evolved into, and we have a couple of more coming in pretty quick with our potential community engagement director. We're looking at an administrative assistant to back up the front office as well as handle permitting and some of the other office tasks in the community development department. You guys had asked us, moving away from hiring, to make some content adjustments in the Goddard Lance. That came up at the beginning of the year, and I felt like we've made that difference known, and it's been seen in the new additions of the Goddard Lance. This medical log is a walnut, that's one that we abandoned just because of the public infrastructure over there, to where we couldn't add that connectivity. I would really like to figure out a way to be able to get those residents to all the public amenities on Main Street without having to get on the highway, but unfortunately, that solution's no longer an option, so we may have to work something else out at some point. Technical goals, manual update, financial policy update, office furniture, got appointments to the different associations that we're a part of, and we've had a couple annexations. We got several more planned for the beginning of the year. And that's the quarter four update for the 2024 goals. I know you've got some questions, comments, jabs.
Oh, we got jab.
Well, in the interest of time, we'll just let you roll into your other report. We'll move on to the city minister's report, just keep the fun rolling.
Starting to feel like open mic night.
Just don't start singing. You can get Brooke back if you're making a mistake.
I'll spare him. So, I don't like to address things that we see on social media, but I figured that it's going to be asked. So, it come to my attention today that there was a post of catching traction, it was illustrating one of our city public works vehicles, a property in Wichita around lunch, and we had a teammate that was making a parts run, he was stopped at home just to grab a bite to eat, which is totally acceptable and allowable. But it has prompted us to take a fresh look at our vehicle's policy for that department, and there's some items in there that I would like to change and work with Brooke on, which will actually be, I think, a retention tool for our employees. For instance, I'd like whoever is on call to be taking the work truck home, that way they can respond directly to the site whenever there's instances that they're called in. So, there may be some other tweaks to that too, which won't make it to council, but typically I won't bring these up, but I thought it was worth mentioning because I was catching a lot of traction today. The water tower schedule for next year, cleaning on Tuesday, which is tomorrow. I wanted to ask the council, I think I had brought up a previous council meeting that we would look at running the Goddard Water Master Plan through the Water Committee before we brought it to council. I don't know that that timing is extremely important. I really would like to get it in front of you guys, but if we want to run it through the committee first, it's not going to be till probably February that you look at it because their next meeting is not until January 27th. Would you guys like to wait until February, or would you guys be comfortable with having a Tuesday, December 10th workshop in lieu of our fourth Tuesday meeting since that fourth Tuesday's Christmas Eve? We're not going to be making any decisions, but I want to get it in front of you guys because we're trying to get this CIP finished.
I don't think that would be a big issue for the Water Committee, we'll look at it first, when you guys get a chance to look at it. I'm not going to approve anything, but.
Of course, we can send it to them immediately.
Yeah, we'll probably do that.
Email it. Remind me?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we could, if we could send it to them, we're fine with that, then, you know, reach out, see if a few of them, I'll go through them, that'd be nice.
We're looking at noon Tuesday, December 10th. We could also look at a different date that week. I don't know, I'm asking, I guess, kind of maybe it felt like I was to come in on the spot, but just look. Look at your calendars, and I'll follow up with you tomorrow to see if we can get a majority of you to be present at that, but that's a big part of our tenure CIP, and I need to get that presented to you guys and to the Water Committee so we can kind of wrap that in as a CIP, so. The Garver MSA, so the attorneys between Garver and the city, they're still bouncing that back and forth, but there's no like, it's not like it's a cost issue or something like that, just some liability concerns with some of the language that these engineering firms, no offense, Harland, Harland doesn't do it, but some of these firms that we work with are starting to put new language in there that unveils the liability, and so we're trying to find a happy medium there with that process. The Linear Park Playground Edition, I spoke on that, Turn Lanes, Water Committee, nothing new there, just to call out the next meeting, January 27th. I mentioned SCADA, we should have that to you guys by the end of the month, January at the latest. Goddard North Park, next steps, proposals for cost and qualifications. The City/Rural Water District Number Four Pump Station Project, so as I've mentioned, Harland and his team worked really feverishly on this last week and the preceding days to get the request for proposals out because we needed to allocate our American Rescue Plan Act funds by the end of the year. Right now, those, we're advertising for those bids. At the December 16th council meeting, there was quite a bit of action related to this item. We'll consider awarding a bid for the construction, consider purchasing the pump station itself, consider authorizing purchase of the backup generator, and then authorizing the cost-share agreement for a water district for the pump station. So, they agreed to this cost-share at their last meeting, so that should be good to go. Here's your November community development update. Interesting, they were still building houses this late in the year in this kind of weather, but we pulled ten new residential builds. One thing that was really interesting is I believe this was the only month out of the year where we didn't have any additional two-family permits pulled, these were all single-family, primarily in Treleson and then a couple in Arbor Creek. Upcoming agenda items, advertising, the mowing contract, awarding the SCADA bid, we've got a couple annexations in the queue. Ryan Schrak has been working on the Senior Center Advisory Council ordinance, mentioned the Water Utility Master Plan. In lieu of our vision of bringing in a community engagement director to manage the community events in the community, that's a repeat of the same word three times, we need to rework the front office to create a couple of additional workspaces, so that's going to require some office furniture purchases. Pro-code compliance, legal team is still working through that, a couple of sticking points, but that's going to be a huge process improvement in efficiency for our city. Land bank ordinance, planning commissioner appointments or reappointments, and then, of course, I mentioned the Rural Water District. One other thing I want to highlight, we've been getting a lot of feedback from our citizens and stakeholders about the water rate increase because it was reflected on the November 1 bill. So, just want folks to know that, you know, we understand that that's come on. If you remember, during that process, we suspended it a few months, so that wouldn't come into effect until months with less water usage, I think, when we first brought it up, it was maybe end of August during more higher usage period, so. But with that coming to effect, we are starting to see some more feedback and comments on it, so I'm assuming you guys are getting some of that too. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for entertaining the discussion.
Any questions? Governing body comments?
You know, a lot of exciting things happened in this year, and a lot of good news are coming too, so. Thank you, Brandon, and also for addressing the council with your comments this evening.
Buster, a couple things. This job can be stressful at times. It really can. Tonight was one of those nights, but yesterday at church, our pastor was talking about joy and chaos, and it is such a blessing to get to be stressed about things in this city. So, thank you for those of us, for those who interest us to do it. I would urge you to continue to show up, continue to voice, continue to come and have those conversations and tell us how you feel, and hopefully we can continue to represent you well. Where is that? While I'm thinking about it, relocation of trees, exciting because that's moving forward. I have trees for you, so we can get them, put them wherever we need them, but those are in Craig's office. So, I wanted to make sure that I remember, I think I told you that earlier, so I just don't want to, Craig will find a bag of dead trees next week or something.
I will come get them tomorrow.
There in there, you go find those. And then also, Brooke, you guys are incredible at doing Christmas decorations. It looks beautiful at the park.
I appreciate that, that's Alan Rolston, my Parks guy, he's.
Fantastic. I was teasing Craig, I said, maybe next year, we'll get out on a break, but now we've got to decorate them, we can make it a whole experience.
And we will add to it. We try to add a little bit every year. We had a lot of projects this year, so we just kind of stuck where we were, but we'll.
We'll see you tough. Give me a call. I love it, I'll do it. Now, thank you guys for all your hard work. It looks incredible. That's it.
Very good. Yeah, I agree, the decoration looked great, can you come do my house? Ask Craig.
That'd be a conflict.
I'll let it ask. Can you ask me? You know, you hit on a, you hit on a point there. This is an easy job. There's a lot of things we have to make, we can disagree up here, you know, but that's what makes us work so well, you know? Certain things we need more open discussion about. I'm not going into details, but there are certain things that we, you know, we need to really give serious consideration based upon facts and overall well-being of certain programs. You guys did an excellent job, you delivered reports, I'm just hearing from Micah. He would have got through that whole presentation in thirty seconds. Anyway, thank you guys.
Couple things I did find in the list of the mitten tree items to purchase, it's only eight thirty, it's the bottom of the pile and stood in the bill or a five, but I, again, I just want to reiterate that it's just so neat to hear. Remember, people have volunteered, the fact that here we are on December 2nd, the mittens have already been picked up, and the last piece of this is requiring the race. And the last piece of this is requiring to raise some cash for socks, coats, rolls of Scotch tape, hats, gloves, undies, just to fill the list of kids with the age of 5 to 15 years old and stuff. Really thankful for the Lions Club and everyone else that participated and all the people that picked up a mitten and the people that donated cash. Just wanted to make a brief comment as it relates to the water ad hoc committee. Couple things that I'd like to see on the agenda for the January meeting or scheduled by that time. I'd like to see that we get a meeting set up to either go visit Valley Center or maybe Derby or have their administrative folks that are working on water treatment plants come visit with us so we can get some impact, information on process. Not 100% sure where they are in those, in where they are in terms of getting their water treatment plants built. But I think it's always good to talk to someone that's just a little further down the road than you are on something. The other thing is that I'd like to reach out to a couple of representatives for our state, or national, or senators, or U.S. senators that I visited with about a water treatment plant. And they've expressed an interest in visiting a bus. So I'd like to get that set up here in the next couple of weeks too. So that's part of the January. Whether it's not the meeting, but maybe we could have those that can meet during the day if they can't meet, you know, in the meeting or any other meetings. But I think that it's important that we work on trying to develop a list of grant possibility sites and where funds are available at the national level. I think we also need to reach out to our state legislators and then just develop a list of locations of where we can start looking for funds for that project. Then in February, kind of along, maybe we need to do this in January, maybe do a little calculating of what the ongoing cost would be in terms of preparing for this. We might need to include some funding in the CIP for the ramp up to do this. So I just want to kind of be sure we don't drop those balls and keep those things moving forward. Because that was one of the, you know, the four items that that committee was charged with. Water quality, water conservation, working on the water restrictions and water reuse. So just want to say thank you to that. You're the people for their time and their efforts. And Ryan, your effort for leading that charge. Be a great community. We need to have not only quantity, which we've done a lot of work on this year, but we need to also be looking at quality. And there's no reason why it cannot be done. So that we, that we need to lean forward and press on on that issue. Through the season. That's all I have. Staff, thank you. I had a conversation with a gentleman today that has been in the construction train that is pleased with the changes in the ways the city's handling its business as it relates to development and building. And I would thank all of you that are involved in that on a daily basis for your integrity and working on those things. I made a comment to someone that I thought we turned a corner in terms of the perception. And I think we have. But I think we need to continue to work and do the things, do things the right way, do the right things. I always kind of think of my dad. He always would say that the golden rule goes a long way. And we just remind ourselves to treat people the way we want to be treated. There's amazing blessing in that. And also, a lot of positive things happen when we operate at that level and on that plane. So just want to encourage everyone, the staff and the community, to continue to operate that way. We're here to try to do what's right for the city of Goddard. It's a great time to be in a situation where we've got pressures with growth and things. But those pressures, as somebody told me, that, you know, pressure takes coal and turns it into diamonds. So hopefully, as we work through these things and we continue to strive to do what's right, we'll make Goddard the jewel on the hill west of Wichita, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. He makes a motion.
I'll for seconds. Thomas and Thursday, aye.
Aye.
What is this?